We are so grateful for your presence today. Thank you for being here. I have the honor of serving as the Chair of this great commission. My name is Dr. Shawna Hawkins. And before we begin, I want to make opportunity for our great Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins to bring us greetings and welcome. And I'm honored to be one of her appointees here. So thank you for being with us this morning. We know you have a busy schedule, but before we begin our business meeting, we'll make room for our great Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hawkins. And I am just so happy to be here. And thank you for being extraordinary, just as every single member of this panel. When we understood that we had to pass the legislation enabling this commission, we wanted to make sure that we had some of the brightest, most committed people who would not only just come and pay lip service, but would bring the heart and the soul of what it is we in New York are trying to do as it relates to our history, as it relates to our present, and as it relates to our future. And this is an extraordinary committed group of people who will, will help us tell the story. And that's what this is really about. And so I know this is the third hearing. I know that, I understand we've been in Queens and up in Buffalo and going, this is obviously here in Albany, but they will be going around the state to talk about slavery as it relates to New York and all the residual impacts and effects. I could tell my story, but I've done it over and over again. And so this is an opportunity for you to tell your stories. And for you to understand, and I know you do, more than ever, these stories must be told now. I stood on the floor of the chamber for Black History Month. And again, I, I almost never speak on Black History because I have so many members who have so much that they want to say. And I generally speak Dr. King and then Black History when it rolls out. But I felt compelled this year because of where we are, because people who absolutely want to deny or erase reality.
Right.
So as that is happening sadly in so many places in the nation, I'm very happy that we are leading again in terms of telling the story, in terms of looking at the impacts, and looking at how we can create the kind of future that acknowledges, not hides our past, and ensures better for us as New Yorkers and hopefully nationally. So thank you so much for doing what you do. And I look forward on the Senate level, and certainly I know I'd speak for Assembly Speaker Hasty in the Assembly as well. We welcome your efforts. We will continue to be supportive of those efforts. And thank you so much for what we do.
We'll begin right now, and welcome to you all. I see some friendly faces in the room, and I'm glad to see a collective of New York State residents here to talk about the opportunity for reparations. Again, I'm Dr. Shawna Hawkins, and I have the opportunity to serve on this great commission as the Chair. I want to make room as we begin to welcome our commissioners and give them an opportunity to introduce themselves. And I'm so glad to see so many of us here all together in Albany once again. So we'll start with Lynda Brown Robinson.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome. I'm, thank you. I'm Lynda Brown Robinson. I am one of the nine commission members. I hail from Syracuse, New York, but originally from Mount Vernon, New York, and born and raised in the New York City area. So I'm glad you all are here. We hope to do great work for you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. It's so great to see your smiling faces. My name is Lynda Tarrant Reed, and I live in Neshal, New York. I am a writer and a historian, and this work is near and dear to my heart. And this is a culmination of my career as a writer and historian. And I am thankful to be on this committee, commission. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Ron Daniels. I'm President of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and convenor of the National African American Reparations Commission and co-convenor of the Global Circle for Reparations and Healing. And also have a little radio show on WBAI that some of you may tune into every now and then. So I've spent most of my adult life working on this issue. We had a very critical moment as our esteemed leader referenced, and so New York is at the forefront. And I hope to have a little bit more to say about that later. I actually prepared a statement along those lines, but I'm delighted to be able to serve on this commission with so esteemed leaders who are committed to reparatory justice being at the forefront in New York and in America.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Reverend Dr. Deborah D. Jenkins. I hail from the Boogie Brown Bronx of New York, Bronx in the House. All right. I am originally from Montgomery, Alabama, the home of the civil rights movement. My grandmother and my mother were both a part of the bus boycott, so my roots in civil rights run deep, and they have instilled those values in me. And I sit here representing them and my ancestors who were enslaved in this country and here in New York. And so I am extremely happy to serve on this commission as a restorative justice expert and political scientist and a caretaker of the soul. I will leave it all on the field for our people to receive their reparative justice. So thank you all for entrusting us and leader. Thank you.
How are you doing, Commissioner Tim Hoag? I am the Commissioner for New York State Civil Service and President of the Civil Service Commission, and I am just excited to see so many people come out today to have this conversation. And as the leader said, it's important, a part of the work is important that we hear from each and every one of you to inform us on what you would like to see as residents and New Yorkers, because that's part of our guiding principles and guiding as far. And so Buffalo, New York, couple of summers, yes, sir, yes, sir. Unfortunately, a couple of May's ago, we had Incident 514 where an individual came into the community and took 10 lives from the community. And I live right down the block from there. And so this is the time that we're in, the conversations that are happening across not only these United States and New York, but around the world. It's more important than ever that we complete this work, that we do this work, but once again, that we do it together. And so thank you so much. Please continue to follow the work that we're doing. Please continue to push us. Please continue to allow your voices and dialogue to be heard. Utilize our website. Tell your friends, tell your family. And we really, so we get a lot of older individuals that come out, so I'm glad to see that we have some younger folks in the room. But please use your sphere of influence to talk to younger individuals so they can be a part of what we do. So thank you.
I am Commissioner Derek Hamilton. I'm the Henry Cohen Professor of Economics and Policy, a university professor at The New School and founding director of the Institute on Race, Power, and Political Economy, and recently appointed the Chief Economist for AFL-CIO. Thank you. Grateful to be here now as much as ever. In the moments that we're living in, it's important that we uncover truth and reconciliation and redress so that we all can have a brighter future.
Thank you. And I'll take this opportunity to introduce myself. Again, I said my name is Shawna Hawkins, but I also am with, I am with the Urban League of Rochester. I almost forgot my title for a second. But I serve as the President and CEO, and I'm hailing from Rochester, New York. And so my Rochesterians are in the house. Got one right there. Thank you, Dr. Lee, for traveling, but also originally from Brooklyn, New York. So any Brooklynites here, yes, let's go. Fort Greene here. And so certainly also lived all over upstate, so I can, I can start naming towns. Portland, I'm from Portland, I'm from Utica, I'm from Syracuse. So I've lived all over, but certainly honored to be part of this commission and given the opportunity to lead this great work. Before we officially begin, I would like to make room to introduce our Executive Director. Maybe we'll bring her to the front of the room so that we can officially introduce her to the community. We are really proud that in January, we officially hired our Executive Director, Dr. Makini Chisholm Straker. She's doing the behind the scenes work. So we'll officially call this meeting to order, and I am grateful again that you all decided to be with us this morning. I want to provide some quick updates for you on what the commission has been doing. Certainly, we have hired our Executive Director, and we're really proud of that. But that began in January, and we know that this work is going to take us much time to do it. We want to make sure that we present to the Governor, the bill sponsors, the legislature. We want to ensure that we send them the quality report. And that's going to take time, because we have to ensure that we hear your voices, that we take the time to do the research, we work with our historians, we look at our policy analysts and look at the policies, and also an economic view. And that's going to take us some time. And we believe as a commission, it's going to take us about 18 months. So we produced a letter to the legislative body to let them know that we would like, we're requesting, we've actually produced it to the Governor, that we would like a extension for about 18 months. So we'll keep you posted, but we're sharing that here because we need you to advocate for the commission, and we need your support, because we want to take the time to produce a quality report. It has taken us time to get some staff, and we're still hiring. And if you want to go to our website, you can learn more. In fact, I'll take you all through, just if you take the time to go to your phones, because we want to make sure you understand the commission. As we travel around New York, people are still learning that this commission exists. And so we want people to feel comfortable knowing about the commission. So if you go to your phones, you can go to newyork.gov/reparations. And if you click on the link, you can go to the commission, you can learn more about each commission member, but you could also click on Meetings and Contractors. If you would appease me for a second and look at Contractors, because we have a list of opportunities available. You go to Contract Opportunities, we are looking for a historian. We're also looking for a Research and Policy Analyst. In addition, we're looking for an audiovisual streaming services consultant along with, we've just finished up our search for communications firm, more on that in the future. So there's opportunity. You can also learn more if you scroll down, you'll learn more about our upcoming meetings. We have a meeting next month in my town of Rochester, New York, on March 4th. So all the Rochesterians that are watching, please be there. But if you're not from Rochester, it's an opportunity to come. And here, we're going to be talking about urban renewal. That is our theme for that meeting, and you'll hear the great work that is happening around the state. But we want people to come to the public hearings with a prepared statement and prepare and think about what they believe the commission should be working on and where are their opportunities for remedies of the harms of slavery. So that's what we'll hear this after, this later on after our business meeting. This is our business meeting that you're all attending now. It's an opportunity for all of our commissioners to come together, to have conversations about our work, and also update one another. But we all don't get to meet each other all the time. So this is, we haven't seen each other altogether in how long? It's been some months. It's been some months. So this is our business meeting, so we'll continue to have that meeting, but wanted to provide that, those updates there. I want to stop and make room if there are other updates that the commissioners wanted to share before I continue forward. So in addition, we've also on our website, we've posted additional meetings. We'll be adding more as we ramp up with staff. We'll be adding more meetings. You just see what we have posted now, but we plan to double up our efforts as we get more staff. We're really excited because Dr. Makini Chisholm Straker has been busy hiring staff. We've hired some staff to help us and support us tonight, this afternoon, and so we are certainly grateful for her efforts. And so we have an upcoming meeting in Syracuse, New York, we'll be in Utica, New York, Albany, and Brooklyn, my hometown. Excited about that. If you get, take an opportunity, we're still on the website, because this, this crosswalk on the website is important, because we want people to know that it's there, and we also want you to understand the work that the commission has been doing. So this would be our third business, our third public hearing, as the Majority Leader has shared, and we're looking forward to many more. If you go to the website and you click on Meetings, you'll be able to see past meetings. You can view the past meetings. You can also reach out to the commission. Unfortunately, though, the PowerPoint is not up that we shared, but you can go, there's a PowerPoint that has our information on there, but you can reach out to the commission at any time. You can share if you can't come to a public meeting, you can send us an email. You can send us an email, and you can send your testimony. It doesn't matter how long it is. We want to hear from you. The most important part of this commission is the community, and so hearing your voice is critical to our learning. I want to pause and make room for any commissioners that want to add to that. With that said, I want to share what our work is. The work of the commission, first of all, if you want to learn more about the commission, you can go to the New York State Senate Bill, and it's S-1163A, and it was adopted on January 10th, 2023. And we are certainly grateful to Governor Hochul, Senator James Sanders Jr., and Assembly Member, I'm, I didn't even see you, Senator. I apologize. I will certainly make room for the Senator to have an opportunity to speak and share with us after the business meeting. But we are grateful that the Senator is here today. We welcome you, and of course, Assembly Members to Lodge as the bill sponsors. The commission is tasked with examining the legacy of slavery, subsequent discrimination against people of African descent, and the impact of these forces, and how the impact continue to represent into that present day. We also have to comprise a report of recommendations for the appropriate actions to address these longstanding inequities. And then the final report will be submitted to Senate Majority Leader, the Assembly, the Speaker of the Assembly, the minority leaders of the Senate and Assembly, and of course, the Governor of this great state of New York. And right now, it is no later than one year of the commission, and the commission was officially charged with the task on July, in July 2024. And so as I've shared earlier, we are asking for an 18-month extension. With that, I wanted to open the floor to the commissioners to see if there was any other business that they wanted to share.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a clarification in terms of the calendar. Apart from your March date that is scheduled for Rochester, we have not solidified that schedule, because the Bronx is supposed to be in April.
Yes.
Not Syracuse.
Okay.
So it's a movement. It's still fluid.
So thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So we'll continue to send updates, but also please know that we are solidified with Rochester on March 4th, and we hope to see you on March 4th. Any other business? With that, we will end our business meeting for today and begin with our, prepare ourselves for the public hearing. And so I don't want to take any breaks, because we started a bit late, and I want to make room for our great Senator, one of the bill sponsors, Senator James Sanders Jr.
Good to see you all. Good to see you all. Welcome to history. History is what you make. History is what you live. History is sitting, sometimes history is sitting right before you. A question that came up earlier of DEI, and you weren't there when I said, if we, if DEI allows us to find somebody at this level, then that's a good program. That's a very good program. I just wanted to say in front of you, I also say, you, I've served with many different leaders, 30 years in, many different leaders. You are the best. If it were not true, I would not say it. If it were not true, I would not say it. You are the best. Which brings us to here. These are the best, too. These are the best people in New York that we've brought together to do some amazing stuff. If you ever really get a sense of your history, of what you are here to do, my God, it would be so overwhelming. So again, you are in my prayers, especially you, Madam, Madam Chair, in my prayers to do this right. Take this literally. Take this to, to, to home. Take this and participate. This is not a spectator sport. This is something that we should participate in. If you have concrete things that you can bring before this commission, if you have harms that you can document, all the better. If you can document things, you also have the right to say what you think it should be. How do you think all of this should land? You also have the right to say you're against the whole thing. You have the right, and we are here to uphold your rights. This is a fair and open process. That's why it must go to every part of New York State and to deal with all kinds of audiences. But we are here in Albany. It is cold outside, but it is warm here, and I want to get out the way, because the stuff that they're about to do, I'm just proud to be sitting down there, watching it in a moment or two. Incidentally, we will be joined by an African king and a, a African queen. They're coming in here. This is one of the reasons I, they chided me. I'm, I'm a chief, and I was not, I've not been wearing my, and they chided me, and you've never been chided, I said, you've been chided by a king. So we'll be joined by them, and that, that's history, too. The other side looking on this. Having said that, thank you. It's good to see you all. Thank you for this moment. Let me sit down.
Thank you, Senator James Sanders Jr. We are grateful. Everyone, welcome to the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies Public Hearing. I am Dr. Shawna Hawkins, and it is my honor to welcome you. I have the honor of serving as the Chair of this great commission. I am most grateful for their leadership. We welcome you. This is an opportunity to hear from the community. At every public hearing, we plan to provide you education first, and so there'll be an opportunity to hear about the history of the harms. And so we'll, we'll have a presentation immediately following the introduction of all of our commissioners. And so this is, we're going to do another introduction. This is a new meeting, and so this is our public hearing, and so we want to make sure that we introduce all of our incredible minds that get to join together as a collective to make the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies. So welcome commissioners, and we will begin this time with Dr. Derek Hamilton.
And I'll be brief. I am Commissioner Derek Hamilton. I am a university professor, the Henry Cohen Professor of Economics and Policy. I am the Chief Economist for the AFL-CIO, and I am the Director of the Institute on Race, Power, and Political Economy. My university roles are held at The New School in Brooklyn, New York.
Tim Hoag's Commissioner, y'all can clap for it. Tim Hoag's Commissioner for New York State Civil Service and President of the Civil Service Commission, and excited for what's happening today.
Commissioner Reverend Dr. Deborah Jenkins, hailing from the Bronx, New York. Excited to be a part of this commission.
I'm Dr. Ron Daniels. I would request from the Chair the permission to make the final statement, as I have a brief statement I'd like to make.
Oh, you're going to go lap? Hi, my name is Commissioner Lynda Tarrant Reed. I hail from Southern Westchester. I'm a historian, and I'm very excited about the work that we have embarked on.
Good morning again. I'm Lynda Brown Robinson. I hail from Syracuse, New York, born and raised in New York City. I'm a gubernatorial appointee to this commission. I am a Regional Director under the great leadership of Hazel and Duke's President for New York State NAACP. I thank you so much for your attendance, and we look forward to doing great work for you all.
And really quickly again, Shawna Hawkins, served as the Chair of this great commission. I hail from Rochester, New York, but originally from Brooklyn, so grateful.
Rochester gets music.
Yes, when you say Rochester, it comes with music. So absolutely. We hope to all see you in Rochester in March, but I am an appointee of our great Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, and I am so grateful, yeah. I'm grateful that she is here with us today. If you are just attending now, she did bring greetings at our business meeting. This is the public hearing, and so we welcome you. So I will pause and make room for Commissioner Daniels, who wants to provide a statement before, oh, yes. And before I give an opportunity to make room for Commissioner Daniels, I want to introduce our Executive Director. We are so proud to have an executive director. It was a process to get her there, I'm here, but she's here as of January 2025, and she has been running with a fire behind her. And certainly, we are grateful to have Dr. Makini Chisholm Straker, who is our Executive Director. If you can come up. Our, our great, if you want to bring greetings, you can, but we're happy to have our Executive Director.
All right. Peer pressure. Thank you all for being here. It is a great honor, as the work of my ancestors have brought me here, and I'm a future ancestor. I'm grateful that we can do this work that brings us to communal abundance. Thank you for having us.
And I should acknowledge that the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies has an executive committee, and we are so proud of the executive committee, because they work weekly to make sure that we continue to advance the work of the commission. We work hard together, and I'm grateful for, if I can introduce our Chair, Dr., I'm Dr. Deborah, Dr. Deborah Jenkins. It's the Vice Chair, I'm the Chair. I'm sorry. Long night for me, long drive in today, but I am the Chair. Dr. Deborah Jenkins is the Vice Chair, but thank you. But she's always ready to stand in and ready, so I am grateful. We have our Secretary Lynda Tarrant Reed. Yes. And we are also very grateful for Jennifer Jones-Austin in her absence, but she serves as the Treasurer. And so that is the executive committee, and we are grateful for their leadership and hard work. And I'd like to give them a round of applause. So with that said, I would love to prepare for our education session, and we have the honor of having Lavanda Nahon, Interpreter of African American History at the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Presentation. If you would join me, if you would join me in welcoming her, but before we do that, I want to make room, I appreciate Commissioner Hoag, because he makes sure that I don't forget things, so I'm grateful for him. But before we have Ms. Nahon, I want to make sure that we make room for the statement from Dr. Daniels.
Thank you very much to our esteemed Chair, and I really appreciate that. And I didn't want to interrupt the other statements, and at a certain stage in life, hopefully you get a little OG privilege. I am Dr. Ron Daniels. I'm President of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and convenor of the National I'm President of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century and convenor of the National African-American Reparations Commission. And also the co-chair of the Global Commission, the Global Commission on Reparations and Healing, Global Circle on Reparations and Healing. Protocol having been established, I will skip the, my, I wanted to commend everyone and so forth and so on because I wanted to get to the meat of what I wanted to say. And I think, I asked for that because I, I think we're in a very particular moment in history. I'm also a historian, retired distinguished lecturer at York College, City University of my life, City University of New York. As we meet here today, reparations in the state of New York has never been more crucial. This undertaking to our esteemed leader that you were able to bless us with along with the other leaders, we probably were not aware of how providential it was going to be that New York is now being called upon to be in the forefront of the reparations movement in this country. Why do I say that? I also have, have had the honor of working with Congressman John Connors, the late great John Connors with HR40. I worked for ninety-nine weeks with the late great Congresswoman Chita Jackson Lee as the facilitator of the HR40 Strategy Group. Because at the federal level, HR40 is the apex. That's the apex. At the end of the day, for whatever we do at the state and local level, it will be the federal level that provides the huge amounts of resources that are going to be required for the kind of repair we need. Fact of the matter is elections have consequences. And so now we were on the preface of getting HR40, at least there was the opportunity of HR40 enacted by executive order because we could not get it through the Senate. And by the way, it's going to become increasingly important that our people at all levels understand how politics works. Political and economic liter, I mean political literacy is going to be crucial in the, in the days ahead. So now the terrain has shifted. There is no opportunity. I mean, we, we will introduce HR40 again. It has been introduced by the great Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley from up in Massachusetts. I met with her last week and our own Congresswoman, Yvette Clark, was there as well. But the fact of the matter is that will be a placeholder. There was absolutely no opportunity in the current terrain for HR40 to be exacted. The current occupant of the White House is talking about giving reparations to white people. And this is not to say that there are not grievances that need to be adjudicated. That's not the point I'm making. Beyond that, he has talked about the need to accept oppressed and afflicted white people from South Africa to come to these United States of America. So what that means is we, we, we have to be, take seriously the nature of this moment. And so in reality, local and state reparations does what? It becomes to the forefront. Reparations is going to be at the state and local level. Many of you may be aware, it's the National African-American Reparations Commission. We are the ones who certified Evanston as the replicable model, replicable model for reparations. California has done its work. And so now we are faced with state and local reparations, adjudicating it at the level of financial institutions, families, and corporations. And by the way, please take note of the fact that last week or the week before last, in Springfield, Illinois, Cam Howard and Reparations United introduced a slavery disclosure and redress initiative, a bill to look at corporations and how they have been involved. And many of them are in the state of New York. That is something that also can be replicated, and families. And so I say all that to say in conclusion that the work that we are undertaking now is incredibly important because it will set the stage. It will be the, it will set the pace for reparations, not only for the state of New York, given the unique history of the state of New York, in terms of educating ourselves because a part of reparations is our own self-healing. It's the awareness. The awareness in and of itself is healing because we have been tormented and tortured and the trauma has been across generations. But it is also to make impeccable recommendations. And then we will must organize ourselves to advocate and to support those leaders in the legislature who have advanced this because this is not going to necessarily be easy. But if indeed the people organized, we will never, ever be defeated. So I just wanted to make that statement just to contextualize where I think we are at this moment in history. So thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Daniels. We appreciate your wisdom and we are grateful. Are there any other commissioners that need to make a statement before we begin with Lavada Nahon? Thank you commissioners. Before we begin with Lavada Nahon, I want to remind you all that this is the public hearing. If you wanted to speak, there is a sign up sheet. If you haven't done that already, please take this opportunity to sign up so that you can share your testimony. You will have three minutes for testimony. And I'll go through that and how we operate when we prepare ourselves for testimony. But certainly want to make sure that you have this opportunity to sign up. So with this opportunity, I would love to welcome Lavada Nahon, Interpreter of African-American History for the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. Please, let's give her a warm welcome.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to thank everyone and the commission for giving me this opportunity to give you a high-level overview of the institution of slavery in the colony of New York and the New Nation periods of both New York and New Netherland. It is a straight overview I'm gonna start today. And it is my hope at the end of this presentation that we will have shed some light on the full story, two-hundred-year history that is here in New York. Just a moment, please. My apologies. We're gonna begin with a few facts I believe everyone should be aware of. Twenty-two African men were taken from a Portuguese ship and arrived via a Dutch privateer and were purchased by the Dutch West India Company on August the twenty-ninth, sixteen twenty-seven. They were the first enslaved. We learned this last year. In seventeen fifty, New York State had the fifth largest population in the thirteen colonies of people that were enslaved. In seventeen seventy, there were more enslaved Africans and descendants in New York State than in, sorry, in the colony of New York than there were in Georgia. New York was the largest slaveholding state in the North and slavery lasted longer here than in any other northern state besides New Jersey. New York City was the second-largest slave market in the thirteen colonies. The emphasis on trading and supplying enslaved Africans to southern colonies, the Caribbean and West Indies began during the Dutch period. The last slave trader based in New York was hung in eighteen sixty-one. Lincoln refused to pardon him. Enslaved people were frequently traded and rented out to neighbors. So the numbers of enslavers across New York and those using slave labor were greater than statistics would have you suggest. Slaveholders could not just set a person free. There was a costly and complicated process to manumint someone, which began in seventeen twelve and ended in seventeen ninety-nine with the Act of Gradual Abolition. Legal slavery ended in July fourth, eighteen twenty-seven, but it did not free all of those held in bondage. The last person was freed in eighteen forty-one and current research suggests that he may not have been the last one held. I think it is important that we begin with a baseline and I will be using what I believe most of us learned in school. There were thirteen colonies, north and south. Slavery was mostly in the south. They lived and worked on plantations, picking cotton and tobacco in the south, sugar in the Caribbean, West Indies. They lived in small cabins behind the big house. It was against the law to teach an enslaved person to read or to write. They owned, they were owned by wealthy plantation or landowners. Otherwise, very few people held them. If New York is mentioned at all, there were few people here and most were in New York City. It was a kinder kind of slavery than it was in the south, especially during the Dutch period. New York was part of the Underground Railroad, making it a safe place for freedom seekers to run through or to live. So there could not have been that many slaves around. Most of the Underground Railroad's support was given by white Quakers who were always against slavery. Please know, all of this is untrue. So let's take a look at the institution of slavery in New York. First, there were three sections. North, which was British. Middle, the Dutch West India Company, New Netherland, which following the British takeover in sixteen sixty-four, became New York, New Jersey, Delaware, Northern Pennsylvania, and Southern Connecticut. And then the southern colonies that were British. Again, August twenty-ninth, sixteen twenty-seven. Because of a paper published by Dr. Jacobs last year in the New York History Journal, we now know the name of the ship and the circumstances that brought those men here. Information and research in the New Netherland project is very, very happening all over the world, not just here in New York. This information on the New Netherland period helps us to realize that it was not two different systems of slavery in New York. In fact, it was one continuous, ever-changing, evolving system. We do not see the British beginnings, but we do see the Dutch beginnings. And that is very important to us because many of the things that were set up during the Dutch period will continue through the British period, including things like clauses on manumission, how the enslaved lived, and the labor that they were involved in. So where did the Africans come from? The transatlantic slave trade began with the Portuguese and the many castes that they established in Central West Africa, in the Kingdom of Congo and Angola, as well as those along the upper West African coastline to supply both their own colonies in the New World and those of the Spanish. But the Dutch were hot on their heels. They established a castle in Almena and then they captured those of the Portuguese and Angola and the Kingdom of Congo. The first Africans in New York and the majority of those in the transatlantic slave trade overall were from Angola and the Kingdom of Congo. Because of the later trading practices of Frederick Phillips, the Manner Lord of Phillipsburg Manor, there are also a large number of people here from the island of Madagascar. Later, there would be people brought from the upper West African coastlines and inland. We know that there are a lot of children and there were always more men than women. Unlike the south, where the majority of the enslaved were held by members of the wealthy land-owning class, in New Netherland and in New York, slaveholders were found throughout the entire economic strata. Elite included men and women. And common people like merchants, craftsmen, the middling class, farmers, tenant farmers, they were all slaveholders. We also know that most enslaved were held in small numbers, averaging one to two people. However, this does not replace those who held more. I will explain this further when we look at the agricultural system that was used. The enslaved in many cases lived within the houses of their enslaver in garrets, which we would call attics, or in basements. Also, unlike the south, where it was against the law to educate an enslaved person, there were never illiteracy laws here in New York. That is why, excuse me, we have many runaway ads saying that freedom seekers may be moving on a path that they wrote themselves. Or contemporaries like Jupiter Hammond, who was the nation's first published black poet. He worked as his owner's secretary. He was enslaved on Long Island. A contemporary of his is Sir Jarnor Truth. And yes, she was from here. Ulster County born, Dutch speaking until she was over ten years old and illiterate her entire life. The institution of slavery. The easiest way for us to see the difference between southern slavery and New Netherland, New York, is to look at the agricultural systems. Again, at school, we learned that slavery was connected to large cotton or tobacco plantations. Things like Mount Vernon, George Washington's home. A plantation is a large tract of land worked as one farm with a resident labor force. In Washington's case, fifty thousand acres, three hundred and seventeen enslaved, both domestic and farm labor. Equal to that here, we have the manor of Phillipsburg, fifty-two thousand acres. However, the owners maintained direct control over two sections. The lower manor house and mill complex stands in today's Yonkers. Sitting next to the Nepperhand and the Sawmill River, around it, they controlled three hundred acres. This included a sawmill and a gristmill complex where the gristmill ran three sets of stones. Fifteen miles directly due north in Sleepy Hollow, they had another manor house on the Potomac River and a gristmill that ran two sets of stones, today known as Phillipsburg Manor Upper Mills. There, they controlled five hundred acres around that house. The rest of the fifty-one thousand two hundred acres of land was broken into small farms, an average of a hundred and fifty to two hundred acres in size, at least to northern Europeans, with most of those tenants being enslavers. Also, please note, this is the upper part of the map for that land. The lower part extends into, across Bight and Dible, into the upper part of the Bronx. I mention the set of stones in the mills because I want you to understand that grist mills in New York were not quaint things that you may imagine. They were commercial operations. Based on documents related to the upper mill, it has been calculated that in that middling season, which happens in the fall, Caesar, the enslaved miller, and other enslaved men that worked for him produced five thousand pounds of flour a day, six days a week. Mills were located all over the state and remains of them can be seen along many riverbanks. Flour was a highly valuable commodity shipped to the Caribbean, the West Indies, to feed the enslaved on the sugar plantations there and into Europe. It is important to understand one very basic difference between the Dutch and the British. Both are from small island countries. However, for the British, power and prestige came through land ownership. The more land they held, the more power they wielded. However, the Dutch, well, their lands are kind of watery, so they were focused on land ownership, mm-mm. But they were seagoing traders, initially in the Baltic area and then they brought that sensibility with them to the New World. They were not interested in developing land. They were interested in finding goods that could be put on an international market for trade. The colony of New Netherland was owned by a company, the second one established by the Kingdom of the Netherlands. First was the Dutch East India Company. Second was the Dutch West India Company, focused on the goods of the New World and slaves. Their primary purpose was to create profit for their investors. As such, populating what they considered a wilderness and turning it into civilized land would require an outlay of funds they were not willing to make. So they introduced a common old northern European system. For the Dutch, it was called patroons. For the English, they were called manners, patents, or freehold farms. Large tracts of land were purchased by single individuals or small groups from native peoples. They were taxed and then that tax was paid to the company to secure that land as a patroon. This continued under the British. It was the responsibility of the patroon, lord of the manor, or landowner to ensure the success of his property. The first of these was Ransellerwick, owned by Kilian Ranselier, which was close to a million acres in size. It was the first and it was the last, remaining until the eighteen thirties. There were eighteen manners and patents in all. The largest on Long Island, Sylvester Manor, established and owned by Quakers who enslaved both native people and Africans. They also owned, as many elite family did in New York, sugar plantations in the Caribbean and the West Indies. The patent lands just meant that the landowner was not the law on that land. They relied on the colonial powers. The manners under the English just meant that instead of the tax funds going to the company, they went to the British Crown, who in turn granted full legal rights and ownership to the manor lands. to the manor lands to the manor lord, as long as they continued to pay the Crown. Between the manners and the patents, there were areas called freeholds. These were large independent farms. Van Buren's Land in Columbia County was part of a freehold. These large farms were also spaces of enslavement, and many operated just like the manners. That is, having the land broken into smaller farms and leased to Northern Europeans, who were also enslavers. So, when one is looking to see the enslaved, it is vital that we look beyond the landowners. And it is also important that you look beyond New York City. Twenty percent of the population in the city was enslaved, but 80% of the overall enslaved population lived in rural areas, not in urban spaces. It is now believed that two out of every three households in urban environments were spaces of enslavement. Seeing the enslaved means accepting them in places and spaces where one would expect to see servants, farmhands, prenaces, or work help of any kind. They were the dominant labor force. Each colony had a cash crop. We are most familiar with sugar, tobacco, cotton from the South, and cod from the Northeast. For New Netherland, New York, it was wheat. We often think of the early trade goods as furs, and that is true. But the fur trade was short and it was not sustainable. Suggested by Kilian van Ransseler in the mid-1630s to the company board of directors, of which he was a member, that the new farmers on his land began to grow wheat to feed the thousands of enslaved on the sugar plantations the Dutch had taken from the Portuguese and Brazil. This decision set the colony on the course of incredible wealth. Unlike other cash crops of the southern colonies that required a lot of hands, think nimble fingers to pluck tobacco worms or bowls of cotton, wheat is fairly straightforward. It is sown like grass in the fields in the fall. It begins to sprout in the winter, but does most of its growing in the spring and summer. However, when it is time to harvest, it is all hands on deck, but that is for two to three weeks in August. And then it slows down again because the grain needs to dry before it can be threshed and winnowed and bagged and taken to the gristmills to be ground into flour. Because wheat requires less attention overall, fewer hands were needed for that work. This allowed tenant farmers to have fewer farmhands, resulting in the enslaved living in more isolated environments. Depending upon the size of the farm, it could be one hand or it could be 20, but rarely are there hundreds held together. But, if you count all the enslaved on all of the farms, on all of the manor lands, patent lands, and freeholds, you will see the thousands. Miles separated them. When they were not dealing with wheat, they were taking care of other farm tasks or, again, rented out to others. In urban spaces, just like on the manners and farms, enslaved women were usually the domestics of a household. Everything from cooks to childcare, seamstresses to maids. We also have numerous men and children as butlers, carriage drivers, boatmen, craftsmen, including potters, weavers, furniture maker, and children being used as chimney sweeps. It is also important to note that within the urban spaces, like New York City and Albany, you have a large number of women as enslavers. In looking at historic documents, researchers are always looking in the papers of women. Wheels, inventories, accounts, books, letters, diaries, et cetera. We find just as many names among their papers as we do those of men. There were two slave revolts in New York, one in 1712, the other in 1741. The punishments were horrific, and a lot of people were sold to the Caribbean. There were laws that required every village to have a town whipper and a whipping post. It was common to give away children as young as three. The slave codes were clearly written and duly observed. The common brutality we are all familiar with was very real. You made no mistake about it. But we also have records of African spiritual practices continuing. The oldest celebration, the oldest African celebration in our nation's history starts right here. Kingston, a celebration of Pentecost that happened in late spring, and it was celebrated for 200 years. One of the biggest challenges happening in the study of the institution of slavery in New York is the skewed perspective and the repeated focus on New York City. We do not have very many books on slavery as secondary resources that are called upon again and again. But the majority of them focus on the city, not on the state. The research extends to about mid-Hudson River Valley, but however, from Poughkeepsie and higher, the research is challenging because people are working primarily with a lot of small collections of historic documents held all over the place. So, information from Kingston to Canada needs serious work. We know that as Palantines, who came in as indentured servants, moved into Western and Central New York, they became enslavers. We know that following the Revolutionary War, people like Rochester and other Southerners came up here and brought their enslaved with them. We know that there were enslaved that fled up the Mohawk and into Canada during the Rev War. But again, research is happening, but a lot more needs to be done. Ending slavery was a long and confusing process. The first path was manumission, a slaveholder freeing someone they owned. This was done through manumission. Beginning in the Dutch period, it was common that clauses were attached to those manumissions, many binding the newly freed to their enslavers. This began with the first 11 who petitioned for freedom and were granted half-freedom. The clause was a list of yearly payments and obligations that they had to do, or they would be re-enslaved. Clauses on manumission continued well into the late 10th century. There was also a 200-pound bond that had to be posted for each person that wanted to be freed. And for the first five years of the law, from 1712 to 1777, the slaveholder had to pay the newly freed an additional 20 pounds a year. Paying this bond was a major purpose of the New York Manumission Society. The first piece of legislation was passed in 1799, the Act for Gradual Abolition. It set up numerous clauses that continued to track people in generational servitude, but they were no longer slaves. They were born free but reclassified as indentured servants, bound to their mothers in slavery until men were 28 and women were 21. And it did not have an end date. The second, the 1872 Act Relative to Servants and Slaves, moved the age for everyone to 21 and freed those born before July the 4th, 1799. There is a lot more, but I believe I'm running out of time. I hope this quick review puts some things in perspective. There was slavery in New York. There was serious slavery in New York. And we at Parks are working and sharing a multi-year program called Enslavement to Freedom, 1627, 1827, to 2027. Because in 2027, on the July 4th and 5th, we will commemorate the 200th anniversary of the legal end of slavery, but not the freeing of all those held in bondage. Eight weeks later, on August the 29th, we will commemorate the arrival of the first, 400th anniversary of the arrival of the first that were enslaved. We are continuing to craft at Parks the framework for our whole history by putting everyone back in place, and that includes the Africans. Thank you.
We're going to do some Q and A. I'm just queuing up the PowerPoint, if you would allow me an opportunity.
Speak louder.
I said, "We're going to do Q and A with our speaker." Let's give a round of applause for the bottom of the hall. And so, if there are questions from the audience, we certainly want to welcome questions for our speaker. We can take questions. Are there other questions? We'll take your question. You want to introduce yourself as well, please? Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. I have, it's a long question, but it's, you'll see. Good morning. My name is Lisa Maria Neroz. I'm an elected official in the town of Greenberg, in West Yorkshire County, and I service the town clerk. I admire the work that the State Commission has accomplished, and I must publicly thank former Congressman Jamal Bowman, who not only introduced me to the Representative Jackson Lee, I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Ron Daniels, which led to me to working with Senator James Sanders on the New York State Reparations Solidarity Coalition. I am currently set to graduate Long Island University in May with my doctorate in education. My dissertation is entitled, "H.R. 40: Heal or Repeal." Dr. Daniels, thank you for your statement, because that was exactly what my question was. How the hell do we get this passed now?
Can I pause your question for a moment? Because this question, right now, this Q and A is for the speaker. So I just, I apologize if I did not make that clear. But if you can pin your question, we want to make an opportunity to honor the speaker that took time to prepare presentations. So if there are questions for the speaker, we want to make room for those questions. Do you have a question for the speaker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The question I have specifically, given that you're now uncovering documents, one of the things I can cross at a local antique shop where the Yates family, they were leasing their slaves to build roads, postroads. So, it'd be interesting if there's anything in the Dutch brought files, records of those who were not only just working on a farm, but the very early roads and road infrastructure. Again, their labor, that is, again, unsung, but that's also a missing little piece and caveat. You know, one of the critical pieces was not only harvesting goods, but getting your goods to the market. And also, is there a database that's actually starting to pull together these names and these populations? And so that you can actually, because again, it's about not only the labor, but the numbers in the headcount that we can do, that other historical societies, whether it's the Holland Museum, whatever, getting names as well as, you know, the labor that we have done.
We'll go first to, I'll go first to the beginning of your question. In the Dutch records, there is reference to the initial company slaves being used to create the infrastructure. We know that they worked on the fort in New Amsterdam. We know that they built the wall. A lot of this information actually can be found online now at the New Amsterdam Project. Beginning this summer, we will commemorate the 400th anniversary of New Amsterdam, the colony's capital. And they have been logging a lot of that work, and it can be found online. In terms of databases, a lot of the databases right now are focused too heavily on New York City. Actually, two came out last year that only focused on New York City. There are some that are starting to collect the names, but we are literally finding documents every day, as you found something in an antique shop. Over the summer, our colleagues at the African American Archive in Columbia County were looking in the back, and looking at a land deeds book, and in the back was a cache of manumission documents. Literally, documents are being found everywhere. And this is one of our biggest challenges, is that for every one book we have a New York slave, history of slavery in New York, there are probably 10 on any of the colonies in the South. We are heavily in original documents, and they are being found everywhere. So if you can just shoot me an email about the one you found, that would be great. We are still building this information and working all across the state. This research is happening, and we're just finding a lot. But we also have a lot of documents that have never been read, never been transcribed, and never been digitized.
Quick follow-on, and that will also be part of the appendix that will be part of the report of reparations, because again, reparations actually goes to an economic argument, and an economic argument ties actually to labor conditions, which I'll bring up later on in other comments. You got a labor economist there, and so Robert Wolf's analysis will class cast labor. So, these documents should be foundational to the work that's going to be.
And there is also a new book that was literally just published two months ago and just released by Dr. Michael Duma, that is on the economics of enslavement. And that would also be a good reference for you.
Hi, my name is Rashida Tyler. I'm from the Deputy Executive Director of New York City Council Churches, but I'm also the pastor steward at the AME Zion Church of Kingston, which is the oldest continuous African-American congregation in Ulster County. And we were recently added to the National Institute Register of places. And we have a lot of the original kind of documents that are just sitting in our church. We also have a lot of oral history that is from the area. So, my kind of two-part question is, what can the State Department of Recreation do to help churches document those oral histories that are not necessarily in the documents, but the stories of families going, walking from Hurley to Kingston and New Pauls to Kingston, and that kind of transference back and forth, to document that oral history? And then, what resources are there for churches that want to document their history or to preserve the documents that they have at their churches?
One of the best things that everyone can do is to contact the county or town or county historian in your area. They connect with the state historian, then who links to the state archive. You actually in Ulster County have a brand-new county historian. He started a few months ago. So one of the things that you can do is reach out to him. There are resources within New York State to help fund digitizing these documents. Greater Hudson Heritage is one of those avenues. So if you can just send me an email, we can connect up. But this is one of the things that is really important. Again, these documents are everywhere. And we are also finding in the historic world that some of the ink that was used in the 17th and 18th century is actually eating the paper. So the faster we can get these things digitized, the more we will have access to them. And it also expands the information that is going out worldwide, not just here. The AME Zion Church was heavy during the period of what we call a transition, going out of slavery into freedom, say, from 1820s to about 1840, 1845. And a lot of that has never been recorded. So, please reach out to your county historian, please reach out to me, and we can put together a process for getting that material digitized. And digitizing is not preserving the original documents. That's a whole separate category. Digitizing allows more scholars around the country and the world to have access to information about New York because in the whole story of slavery in New York is way too often left out.
We'll take the last question. We'll take the last question for this section, for the Q and A, and then we will begin our public hearing. If you have not signed up, there's an opportunity to sign up right outside the door of the ballroom. Last question, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Jackie Cody, New Yorkers for Reparations and National Action Network Brooklyn Chapter Vice President, to name a few. Yay, man! And New Yorkers for Reparations. So I have a request of you. I really appreciate the information, the wealth of knowledge that you bring. My request is, I am from New York City, born and raised in Brooklyn, yay! That, yes, there's a lot of information on New York City. So, and that was repeated. So you could say that once, and then open, it's a request, it's a recommendation, to open your dialogue or your statement with sharing when Africans were kidnapped and arrived in New York. They arrived in Long Island. And there needs to be more of that information and that truth being told about Long Island and what happened there. And I think, and I know that you had a limited amount of time, but I think that needs to be told and shared, that they came up through Long Island and then through the rest of the states. I would appreciate it if you... So I would appreciate if you added that.
Yes, they did. They landed in several places, and a lot of work is being done out on Long Island, both with Preservation Long Island and with Sylvester Manor. They also went around Long Island into the Sound, so we have them landing in places like Rye. We have them bypassing New York Harbor and coming right up here to Albany. So there are many places of contact, depending on who was the quote-unquote slave trader, who were the investors in that slave ship. When we say slave traders, we often think of the people who owned the ship. But one of the things that the Dutch set up was a space for individuals to be able to invest in those ships, invest in those cargoes. So your enslavers are more than the person that owned the ship. And depending on where they wanted them in the colony depends on where they were disembarked. But it is happening all over, and the work, again, from Sylvester Manor, from Preservation Long Island, and other historic entities on Long Island are noting that. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a statement. The African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church is a treasure trove of history. Mother Amy Zion Church was established in 1796 in Lower Manhattan. It is known as the Freedom Church. It is the church of Harriet Tubman and Frederick Douglass. So all over New York State, this longstanding denomination has a lot of history that's been untapped. And this is really a great direction for us as commission to use as the supporting material that we need to make the case about reparations. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you to Levada Nahan for her presentation. Let's give her a round of applause. As we prepare for our public hearing, I just want to talk about what we expect from you and how we will communicate. We hope that we will hear from you, your lived experience, but also recommendations to the commission as we prepare our report for the recommendations for reparative justice. And so let's talk about how we'll communicate. And I apologize that this is a little small, but I'll share it with you. To ensure that this forum remains a safe and respectful and action-oriented space, we ask all attendees to honor the ground rules. And that's that we have three minutes of time. We don't have a whole lot of time today. We know that this caucus has lots of activities, and they're limited. We have a limited amount of time. So we want you to honor the clock of three minutes. We also ask that you respect every voice. Every person has the right to speak and be heard. Please listen actively and allow space for different perspectives. Center solutions, not just frustrations. This is certainly an emotional conversation, and the feelings of sometimes anger, grief, and urgency are valid. So we want to channel those emotions into actionable solutions or recommendations. We ask that there be no personal attacks or hate speech. Certainly, we are passionate. I'm certainly a passionate. And there are many passionate individuals on this commission. But we want to honor that with no disrespectful language, threats, or personal attacks. And as I said, honor the time and the space to ensure that all voices are heard, and be mindful of your time when speaking. Stay present and engaged. We're here to learn and take action. And then we want to thank you for being part of the conversation. We are grateful that you chose. There's so many things to select to be here tonight, to this afternoon. But we are so grateful that you chose to be here with the commission. We also want to thank our great governor, Governor Hochul, for, one, her work to prioritize the work of the commission, and also to Senator James Sanders, who is here. We welcome him. And also to Assemblymember Salajic in her absence. With that said, I want to make room for Commissioner Lari Daniel-Favors to join me. She is going to take on this part of the presentation. So thank you.
And so real quick, before she begins this part of the conversation, for those of you that may be wondering, the presentation, the educational presentation, will be available on the commission website, if you will.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Come on, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Be a little energetic, a little. Y'all, I'm loving y'all so much. I took off my mask so we can be as clear as possible. My name is Lari Daniel-Favors, and I am one of the commissioners here. I also serve as executive director at the Center for Law and Social Justice at Medgar Everest College and the host of the Lari Daniel-Favors Show on Sirius XM Urban View. And in addition to what our chair just shared with us as it pertains to sort of the rules of engagement, we recognize that this work is extraordinarily difficult. It is taxing on our mental capacity. It's taxing on our emotional capacity. And it's taxing on all of us who are doing the work of showing up. Some of your faces, we've seen at multiple hearings, and we appreciate and recognize the sacrifice that it takes for you to be here. We wanted to start today with a centering opportunity, something that would allow us to sort of come out of just our brains as we're approaching this topic, and really remind us as to the power that we are also carrying into this experience. We recognize that right now politically, there are a lot of dangers for our community. And this work is a part of what is being targeted by forces beyond our capacity to control. And so we wanted to start today, in addition to a discussion about what the purpose of this body is, with a libation. Now, by show of hands, how many of you are familiar with a libation? With a libation? Okay, good. I appreciate that. Thank you. So for those of you who do not know, I'm about to date myself a little bit. I know I look young in the fakes, but I'm a little older than I look. Y'all remember when Tupac was pouring out a little liquor for the dead homies? Or y'all remember, I can't remember the name of the group. "I tip my forty to my home." You remember that? These are cultural rituals, pouring out a liquid to acknowledge the ancestors, people who have transitioned into the ancestral world, those who are no longer with us, is a very powerful, nonreligious, cultural ritual that allows us to be put in remembrance of the fact that we stand here on the shoulders of everyone who came before us. This allows us an opportunity to think about the Harriet Tubmans and the Frederick Douglasses, who my fellow commissioner just named, the Octavia Butler's, the Ella Baker's, the Malcolm X, let's give him his proper name, the Elhaj Malik El Shabazzes, who helped to contribute to everything that we have right now. And so this is a ritual, and I'm going to explain it to you, and then we are going to all participate in this, because we want to be centered on the best of our history so that we can pour that into the information that we as a body are going to need to get from you all. So the ritual goes like this. I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to ask you to stand in just a second, and for those of you who can. And I'm going to make a statement that acknowledges the significance of this history. At the end of that statement, we're going to open up this, we're going to pretend we're in a circle. And you are going to be able to say the names out loud of an ancestor who's impacted you. Now, it could be, for example, my grandmother, Gwendolyn Walters. It could be a Harriet Tubman. Whomever you believe is a part of your ancestral background and heritage, who you know was thinking about you, planning for you, praying for you, because we know that we come from a praying people, regardless of your religious background. And you will be able to offer their names. And we will use a phrase called "ashay." Anybody familiar with that phrase? Ashay, yes. This is a Yoruba term. And that term means, "Yes, amen. I am in agreement with it." It speaks to being able to take something from the invisible into the visible. And if you're not comfortable with "ashay," say "amen," child, nobody mad at you, because we are going to do this as best we can to bring out the best of the energies in this room, because this body cannot function without you. Okay? Everybody on the same page? All right, please stand if you are physically able. Now, usually, there would be a plant here that we would be pouring into. And I would probably not be saying this in English, but my tongue has been colonized, like much of ours, and that's the language I speak the best. So that's the language we are going to use this morning. Okay? All right, if we could just, everyone draw your hearts and minds together. We hold this water as a symbol of life, as a symbol of umojah, our connected and shared history. And for the principle of umojah, the principle of unity, we say together "ashay." I pour to the right and to the left to acknowledge the need for balance between masculine and feminine energies and all that exists between those two opposites. We recognize that balance among us as a people is required for the health of any healthy society, nation, community, and race. And for that balance, we say "ashay." I pour now to the north, to the south, to the east, and to the west to acknowledge the four cardinal directions from which our ancestors traveled, laid down roots, made plans, had dreams, built up societies, had successes, had failures, and came together to plan for the next phase of evolution and growth. And for the principle of the Kuji Chagaliah spirit of self-determination, we say together "ashay." I pour now for those who were walking around day-to-day, minding their business. Maybe they were doctors. Maybe they were lawyers. Maybe they were educators. Maybe they were goat farmers. Maybe they were agriculturalists, who that morning woke up with the best of intentions and on that evening found themselves in shackles, found themselves in chains, found themselves headed towards ships and towards devastation and destruction, the likes of which the world had never known. And for what they experienced in those moments, the fears that motivated them, the hopes and the dreams that preserved them, the beliefs and the collaborations that brought them together in a ujima, collective work and responsibility capacity, for that principle and for what we can learn from their experience, we say "ashay." We pour now for the elders, from whom we can learn a great deal, those who are with us. We can learn not only from their successes, but also from their failures. We can look critically at the experiences that they had and pull out the best of those experiences and allow it to fuel the work that we are called to do here today. And for that principle, we say "ashay." We pour now for the children, those who will receive this world and in the spirit of ujima, cooperative economics, in the spirit of Nia, purpose, in the spirit of kumba, creativity, and in the spirit of faith imani, we pour for our babies, who are looking to us to be the best ancestors that they have ever known, because one day, they will be our wildest dreams. And for those babies and the generations yet to come, we say "ashay." We open up the circle now. And if you have the name of an ancestor, someone who is no longer with us, who has either helped you personally or who has committed their lives to dedication on behalf of our people, I ask that you say their name out loud. I will offer my grandmother, Gwendolyn Walters and Tiola Flack, "ashay," and call the names. "Ashay." 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 Come on, we got more than that. Octavia Butler. "Ashay." Yes. "Ashay." "Ashay." Yes, "ashay." Robbie Brooks. "Ashay." 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 Yes, yes. Call the names. We need their wisdom. "Ashay." Yes. "Ashay." Yes, yes, yes. "Ashay." Yes, Dr. John Flato. Yes, "ashay." Yes, "ashay." Yes, indeed. "Ashay." Now, family, we hope and we pray and we treasure the names that were called, and the best of their energies we invite into this space to guide our conversations, to guide our engagement, and to guide this very important work so that we can do the liberation work for our people. And with that, we will collectively say "ashay" three times as we close this circle. "Ashay." 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 You may be seated. Now, I just want to briefly reiterate what our Madam Chair said, because we recognize that when we all got started, and some of you were here, we never got a chance to really explain to the community as thoroughly as perhaps we would have liked what this work is about. You all will have three minutes to present your testimony. This is not the only place, however, that you can share with us what you want us to know. You can submit a written testimony via the website. And I believe, Madam Chair, we have a phone number that you can also call if verbalizing without writing is better for you. I have encouraged people to take out your cellphones and use your Notes app and talk to text, because some of us can speak the words better than we can write them. The challenge that we face is that this body is designed to hear from you what you think reparations should look like. And when you are on this microphone, you can use your three minutes however you want to use it. The challenge that we face, however, is that if you use your three minutes to talk about what you wish the legislation had looked like, for example, that is your right to do, and you can use your time. I would suggest that you save maybe a minute or two of your presentation to, in addition to letting us know what you do not like and the concerns that you have about the legislation, if that is your mission and perspective, to then also make sure you get in what you think reparations should look like. Because if you use all your time talking about something other than what you think reparations should look like, this body can't take that information and formulate the plan that we are going to give to our elected officials. So we are here to hear from you, your concerns, your lived experiences, and, most importantly, what you think reparations should look like. I don't know if we need a song, just to make sure it sits in everybody's head. Use your time however you wish, but please make sure that you let us know what you think at the end of this process, you want our elected officials to know about how you feel the reparations package should look. Okay? Everybody feeling good? We ready? We on mission? We on code? All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to pass it now to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniel-Favors. We are grateful for your work, and thank you for centering this group. For those that are interested in calling the commission, the phone number is (518) 473-3997. And it's (518) 473-3997. And that is on the website. If you go to the contact section, that is there. And it says, "We want to hear from you." There's also an email. If you want to email your testimony, you can email at reparationscommission@reparationsnewyork. So that's NY.gov. But remember, you can go right to the website and get that information. The website is NY, so it's NY.gov/reparations. We are looking forward to your testimony. As a reminder, I can't say this enough, that you will have three minutes to share your testimony. And this from the time that you begin speaking, whether it's your lived experience or your solutions, we certainly look forward to hearing from you. If you find that your timer clicks on you and the time stops, you can stop and submit your voice to text speech right to the email that I just shared. You can go to the website. Or you can just go to the back, make that phone call, and leave the rest of your testimony with you. So as we begin, I have names. If you have not signed up, please go to the back of the room, sign up, because we'll sign up in the order, we'll have you go in the order that is received. I also want to share that when you come up to the microphone, please mention your name, because this is being transcribed, and this information will be submitted as part of the work for the review and part of the historic information that we will use and data that we will use for our report, okay? So remember that when you come to the microphone, you are going to share your name. So I have three people, if you can prepare. So we'll start with the first mic and second mic, and the last person will stand on the side so that we can move this along quickly. When the first mic is available, you will just go to that microphone. So first, we have Willie White. Willie, thank you for being here. There'll also be a speaker here, Mr. White. One of our folks that are volunteering to help, we'll give you a one-minute reminder, just so that you know that you're timed. So if we could just have you stand and if you don't, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. I want to make sure that you stand and you can show them that one-minute reminder and you'll know that, okay? We welcome you to this part of the public hearing. This is the time for our community. And thank you, Mr. White, you are first.
Okay, thank you for having me. Thank you, guys, for the great work that you're doing. I'm so excited. My heart is heavy, because I know that my dear friend was going to be here sitting beside me, but she went on to heaven before this day came, Dr. Alice Green. I know she really, really wanted to be here, but I tell this young lady, your message got me fired up. "Ashé," "Ashé," "Ashé." And I'll use a couple of my seconds to say this here. If we protest courageously and yet with dignity and the love of God in our hearts, when the history books are written in the future, somebody will have to say, "There lived a race of people, of Black people, of white people, of people who had the moral curse to stand up for their rights. And thereby, they injected a new meaning into the veins of history and civilization." So I say to you today, my brothers and sisters, I just want to do God's will. And He's allowed me to go to the mountain. And I've looked over and I've seen the promised land. You know, I might not get there with you, Senator, but we, as a people, would get to the promised land. You see, I'm not afraid to knock. I'm happy. I know that we all together will get to the promised land. I do want to ask a question. Before I do it, one of the proudest moments of my entire life was meeting Coretta Scott King. I met her at the Palace Theater here in Albany, New York. And that was one of the proudest moments of my life. She signed a book for me. And she said, "To the boy from Mississippi." And that's how I asked her to sign it. "To the boy from Mississippi." I am a native Mississippian. You know, I've been going to a couple of rallies around and protests and debates. And people put out that message that if you're not from Albany, you can't do great work in Albany. But I think that's a crock. I think that's a crock. I started an organization called The Village, which is no African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child, right? It takes a village to build up a community. It takes all of us working together to make things happen, just like you guys are working together to get to a common goal. When I was a young kid, my dad used to sing a song that said, "I believe I'll go on to see what the end's going to be." And that's what I want you guys to do. Go on to see what the end's going to be. Because I believe the end is going to be positive. But if the end is not positive, it begs my next question. At what point do we stop acting and start demanding? Because we've all been, we are all aware of what we've done through, as a people, as a race of people. And then, we're dealing with this current administration trying to roll stuff back further. And I got five seconds, and I would say that we, as a people, will get to the promised land. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you for honoring us with your presence. If I can just get someone on this microphone. But thank you, Mr. White, and thank you for respecting the time and thank you for your testimony. We are grateful. Next is Latoya Renee Benjamin. And following Latoya is Beautiful Racket. So if you can prepare yourselves.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank the commission and all the leadership for convening this conversation. It's really important. I want to use this time to share, one, my story, two, what reparations should look like, and three, what reparations should not look like. So again, my name is Latoya Renee Benjamin. I'm born and raised in South Jamaica, Queens. My family is from the South, from Alabama, West Virginia, and North Carolina. I'm the first generation college graduate. Very proud of that and very proud to be here. And I want to thank my mentor, Senator Sanders, for, you know, being steadfast in his work and advocating for the Black diaspora in New York State. I want to share a couple of things. So one, reparations, what it shouldn't look like. It shouldn't look like just social equity. I think we need to talk about addressing the debt that reparations needs to address. I saw Dr. Ron Daniels yesterday, I said, "Dr. Ron Daniels, I'm ready for us to talk about cutting the check." And that's what we need to talk about, cut the check, all right? Cash reparations. I want to start there. There has to be cash reparations. I'm hearing conversations about we shouldn't, we don't, we're not owed cash reparations because how people are going to spend their money. I don't think that's nobody's business. I don't think that's nobody's business how we're spending the money that's owed to my grandparents and my ancestors. So that's number one. I think we have to be clear, we have to clarify the methodology that the commission is going to use to quantify who deserves reparations. I have my brother here, who is African-American. His parents were born in Africa. I think reparations for Africans looks different from Black Americans. I think we need to talk about that. I think there's a conversation of reparations globally as we talk about the international relations and how periphery nations have been colonized over centuries. We need to look at that. We have to also respect the term foundational Black Americans, which a lot of us, my generation, we are considering ourselves. We have to really, you know, and it's not a hate group, but we do identify as foundational Black Americans. We are advocating with the census to make sure if we can get that as a title in the census. I would encourage us to work closely with the census so we could work on this data. We know this is going to be, this may be a generational fight. You know, you may be the first commissioner, you may not be the last, right? So we need to put some key metrics in place to where succession planning after this, we can just have a framework. I have so much to say, but this time is just making me, you know, confused. And then, I think I wanted to say what it doesn't look like. It doesn't look like social equity programs. If we already have social equity programs, the so-called DEI, we need to address that. We need to address the existing resources that's not helping our community. I don't think reparations is education. Education is already built into our state and we need to find out why that's not being addressed and helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We are grateful for your testimony, Latoya Renee Benjamin. And I just want to share to you, Ms. Benjamin, if you're not done, you certainly can email the commission. Just go to the website at NYYork.gov backslash reparations and email us your testimony. Thank you. Next is Anise Cousin. Hello.
My name is Anise Cousin. I'm the director and lead teaching artist of Beautiful Racket. I follow the commission's work virtually and attended the meeting since October. The work of the committee is integral to my work with Beautiful Racket, a creative arts organization that I founded in 2020. Our mission is to make creative spaces feel safe and accessible to creatives of all expressions. Our long-term vision is to be a model for reparative community programming, as well as reparative organizational practices. The means by which we work to achieve our goals and hold space for our programs is rooted in the teachings of Dr. Joy Degru, her theory on post-traumatic slave syndrome, and a number of other intentional practices and procedures, I believe, can reshape social norms and bring about equity in our society. And I look forward to an opportunity to share in more detail my work and see how we can work together to further our movement and ultimately see reparations in New York. Which leads me to my question. Is there a plan from the commission to connect in the community with other organizations like mine that are doing the work and implementing our, you know, our own kind of beliefs and practices on reparative work to kind of get those details for your work and your research and how we can apply reparations?
Tell me what you believe that looks like.
A number of things. So first, Black-led. That the organizations that are, the organizations and the voices that are making these decisions are Black. And through not just the leaders, but our organization is a nonprofit, so our board is Black majority and the people that we serve, that also that our practices, our organization's practices are empowering, that our wages are, and that even further, that even the structure of how we, you know, distribute wages recognizes also, one, for instance, head of household, right? If there is an individual that is one head of household, that there is, it's recognized that one income is, I wasn't prepared for this question, but that there's one income and it should be relative to what it costs to afford, you know, that it's not just minimum wage. So reparative practices in organizational procedures and in programming.
I want to encourage you to continue your testimony in email format or call the number so that we can hear more about what you're thinking. We certainly have not done our work as a commission. We're still traveling around the state and will continue to do that to learn more and then take the recommendation and use it to inform our report.
Thank you. And I will share my card with the executive director, because I did submit an email over and over. So I look forward to connecting more.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cousin. We are grateful for you. So next, we have, it looks like Charles Robinson of Holdup Rollup. I apologize if I couldn't read the handwriting.
Last name is very important, Charles Robinson. I'm one of the first dispensary owners right now at Holdup Rollup, so I should use that. And in actuality, I was first in a lot of things in New York State. So was my family. I'm a descendant of a man named Pyrus Robinson. I don't know if you know the history of Pyrus Robinson, but we all know about Harriet Myers and the Myers and the Underground Railroad. But during that time period, they stayed alive because they were protected by my family. Pyrus Robinson and his three sons. One of his sons was named Charles, which I'm named after. I got three important books right here. I don't know if the commission is familiar with these three books. But Albany plays an intimate part in history. According to the 1790 census, it was 26 free people of color, which happened to be one of my family members. This building, the state Capitol, the land that the state Capitol was built on was stolen from my family. Check if you can, this is actual facts. Everything I speak is actual facts. It was passed on from my father, who just returned to the essence. Eddie Robinson, a very important person, because he taught all seven of us very well, because who we're descendants of. The light's only been on since 1896, which is 105 years. I don't think people in this room understand it. We only been paying taxes since 1919. The whole concept of taxes has only been around since 1919. So I say that to say this. I'm 64 years old, I was born in 1960. I'm about to be 65. When I went on my spiritual journey 37 years ago and I asked God what was going on, He said, "I'm going to give you the best gift of all." I said, "What's that, God?" He said, "I'm going to give you the fountain of youth." I said, "What's that?" He said, "God said it's a razor. Just shave everything and you'll get what's going on." So now, let's fast forward to now, at this point, particular period in time. I encourage this panel, when you leave the room today, just walk down to State and Pearl, you'll see where the first Black man got lynched on American soil. The plaque is right there. You go down to Broadway, they got these architectural desks. It'll tell you a lot about the foundation of what you're about to partake in right now. There's 26 letters in the alphabet, the first letter is what? A, Albany starts with what? For a very important reason. The Dutch families that started what's going on right now in our existence, it originated here. The Skylers, the Tenites, the Grovervilles. Do your research on them, attack them and their families. Their current families right now, because they controlling the whole narrative of the now.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Can I get some more on this microphone? Mr. Robinson, I also noticed that you had books in your hand. If those are your family's books, if you can please scan them and support the website so that we can have that information, that will be helpful. We thank you for being here.
Madam Chair, could we also have him read the names of the books into the record?
Yes, please, thank you. We'll take pictures of it and then we'll add that. Thank you. We'll take pictures. So next, we have Leah James. After Leah James is J.J. Briscoe. Leah James, are you still with us? If not, we have J.J. Briscoe. J.J., are you still? Okay, there you are. After J.J. Briscoe is Roz Jomo Okono. Thank you for being here, all the way from Buffalo. Is Roz still here? No, he moved on to. Okay, J.J.
Hello, yes, my name is J.J. Briscoe. Thank you so much for having me be able to speak today. I am a member of Get Free. We are a youth-led movement to make reparations a political priority for Gen Z and millennials. You know, reparations is really about our future. I got a lot of time left in this country, so we really want to make sure that we're going as far as we can and creating the conditions necessary for a true multiracial democracy. And so, a part of making that real, we have a repair mandate, where we have five core tenants of it that we would really like this commission to know about, to absorb and to implement while crafting your recommendations. This is also based off of UN recommendation. And so, these key components are restoring dignity, freedoms, and rights to all those wronged under racial, gender, and economic hierarchies and inequality, returning the wealth, land, and resources that the 1% and rich corporations owe due to generations of enslavement, genocide, and exploitation. Also, healing our communities from the ongoing trauma and impacts of the laws, lies, and violence designed to reject our humanity, recognizing and reckoning with the whole truth of our history, like the presentation that we had at the beginning, and understanding how it has shaped our present. And then the final part is removing ongoing barriers to equality and rewriting the rules to ensure that these wrongs founded in enslavement and genocide never happen again. And so, really, a comprehensive approach that touches all of these is necessary, important now more than ever, given a congressional majority and presidential administration that is currently undoing many of our hard-fought freedoms and is trying to lock in white supremacy for generations to come. And if anybody else here in the room would like to join us in this movement, we have some QR codes, you can join Get Free, but then also our New Yorkers for Reparations Coalition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, J.J. Briscoe. We appreciate your testimony. Next, we have LaShin, I'm sorry, Lunita Gresham, and then Janice Minapager. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to read the handwriting, so forgive me if I did not get your name correctly.
Okay, my name is Lunita Gresham. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I think I want to do it a little differently in terms of talk about my personal history and with my family. I was doing my research and I noticed that my family went back to 1870. And that's where I got a wall. And that my, on my father's side of the family, everybody was in one place, and that was in Fulton County, Georgia. They did not spread out very far. It went there from 1870. Fulton County, Georgia, is where my family tree kind of got their start. In 1952, my father joined the military and he got injured there. And he was, and that's at the same time in which they had integration. It was just becoming integrated in the military. So he got injured without compensation. And on my birth certificate, I'm listed as a Negro. My father, on his military documents, he's listed as colored. So we went through kind of this evolution. Now they want to lump us with African-Americans, which I think that name should be changed, because I know nothing about Africa. My ancestors never went to Africa, to my knowledge. They were sold to this country in the United States. They endured Jim Crow. My family moved from the South to the North, to New York, in the 50s. They went through Jim Crow, all of that in the United States. So I think that I would like to see lineage-based reparations. I would like to see cash reimbursement for what happened to our families. I would like to not be lumped altogether. I would like, if you're going to do a good study, that the data should be separated and disaggregated so that African-Americans, Black Americans, and Caribbeans will all be able to get their fair share. But I think that it should be done in a way in which we are, everybody is acknowledged separately.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We honor your presence here today and we thank you for being with us. Next, we have Laredo Regular. I apologize if.
No problem. It's actually Laredo, like Laredo, Texas.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak at this panel. I'm a native born New Yorker, multiple generations. I live downstate and my family's been New York, I'd say more over about, I guess you could say closer 80 years. So they went through Jim Crow, was enslaved in the US. So I want to state that reparations need to be specifically for the descendants of individuals who were enslaved in the continental United States. It should not be an all-life matters bill. It should not be social equity programs. It should not be, oh, free education. Because many of us, including myself and some of my grandparents, went through college, but we still experience Jim Crow and economic loss in this country here. One thing I definitely would recommend the panel is to disaggregate the data, to focus on the experiences on the experiences and the lives of descendants of American slaves versus other groups, because all our experiences are not the same. There are individuals who may have experienced racial prejudice, but many times it's because, as Malcolm X said during his debate with, I believe, James Farmer, that it's because you looked like them. Not necessarily because you was an actual African-American but Black, but it's because you look like you could be an African-American. And one thing, just to touch on that, I'm doing research in school right now and I'm working on an academic paper that's close in topic, and I've noticed how many people who are obviously African-descended, Negro-white features were given the experiences of someone that was white, or in times classified as white. I'll use one example, such as the renowned Afro-Puerto Rican author Martha Moreno Vega. She's family is listed as white from nineteen fifty going all the way back here in New York State. So we have to recognize that all of us are not the same and that everyone's experiences are different and to focus this on the descendants of American slaves and recognize this is not just about just people not liking each other, but about the racial harms that have been done and the economic loss that has happened to us and has impacted our livelihoods here in the state. And that the main aspect of reparations should be cash payments to the direct descendants.
Thank you, Laredo. We thank you for your presence. I just want to honor, as he, I know he has a busy schedule, but want to honor Senator James Sanders Jr. for his work in supporting the commission's bill. So thank you. Next, I want to make room for Janice Minapager.
Hi, I'm Janice Mwapaga. And sorry for the bad handwriting. Now, we mentioned, or you mentioned reparative, and I think that's the focus that this has to be. I guess perhaps after we've decided who are genuinely being rewarded reparations and reparative compensation. But it is very important for us to understand that the reparative mode is one of healing, and only we can heal ourselves. That's going to be up to us. And so any form that we get of reparative compensation and reparations, that has to be taken into account first off. We are, in many ways, damaged and traumatized still, and we continue to be. So it has to be a long-term process also. So it cannot be simply in the form of a cash or monetary payoff or hush money. This is money that is, or this is, sorry, compensation for damage and harm done. And that is long-range, over the years, over decades, actually over centuries, in fact. So if there is a way that we can figure out how to distribute that over the years, because we want it ongoing, and trust me, we are entitled to probably what would bring this country into bankruptcy. That's how much reparations we are due. So we can have enough for all of, I mean, very, very many generations to come. So it's not, in my humble opinion, something that should just be poured on us to just keep us pacified or whatever, or to say that, okay, you guys have been paid off. But the damage is very pervasive and it has to, there has to be a plan for generational wealth and sustainable wealth, and it has to be about mental health and because we are damaged, as I was, as I mentioned, and it has to be about reconstructing and rebuilding our lives and our communities. So again, it's not just some type of a paycheck. It's far more critical and complex than that.
Thank you, Janice Minapager. We are grateful for your testimony. Mwapaga, I apologize again. Next, we have Owen Rogers, and then Georgette Greer Kev, or Key? I can't see the name, but I want to make sure we make room. Are you still here, Owens Rogers and Georgette? If you're here, you can go to mics one and two.
Good morning. Good afternoon. First, thank you for the work that you're doing. I am here today kind of by accident. I did not know the time and place of today's hearing, but God does things for me that I don't even recognize sometimes. As we move forward in talking about the reparations and repairing the injuries to our community, it is critical that our young children get some of the information that we in this room share. Towards that end, Dr. Leonard Jeffries and Reverend Dr. Rosalyn Jeffries, they did some work ten years ago to design a curriculum so that our children would have the knowledge that they need about our ancestors and moving forward. That work has been sitting on, collecting dust here in Albany. One of my challenges to the panel is that they revive that work and include it in their work. It is critical that our children get the information early on. The National Action Network, with which I work, with Dr. Sharpton, has our own convention, convention coming up in April, but before that, next Saturday, they will be also having a workshop on reparations at the Harlem office on Lenox Avenue. So it becomes critical that all of these pieces be put together. The work that is being done here in Harlem, here in Albany, is critical, but we need not reinvent the wheel. I'm suggesting that there are scholars before us, and certainly whatever book list, library, bibliography this commission uses, like the brother who is here who's a published author, that I think is part of what can be given out to the community in ways that would enable our children to learn what they need to learn in school. So just basically, it's a matter of educating our children. We already have the information. We already have some magnificent scholars, some of whom sit here before me. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We have what we need to educate our children. We have to make sure that information either gets into the classrooms or we create classrooms in our homes, in our places of worship, the way it was done necessarily hundreds of years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you confirm that you are Owen Rogers? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. When you go to the mic, still, please state your first and last name. I'm grateful. Is Georgette here?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Georgette Levette Greer Key, and I hail from the eastern shores of Long Island. And I drove almost six hours to be here last night, and I'm happy to be here. So first, let me say thank you and I honor you for the work that you're doing, commission members, and I hope that you're also in doing this work, because as historians, we kind of normalize some of this work, and it does bring trauma. So please make sure that you're taking care of yourself and that you have self-care. And so I wanted to say, being here today is really important because I am a descendant of enslaved people. I am an African-American, and I want to make sure that we understand, for me and my descendants, what reparations should look like. I think that it's not just, I want, give us the check if you're going to give us the check. If not, I want to offer up the fact that we should never pay taxes, right? I want to offer up that college should be free for our people who were enslaved. My family came from South Carolina Low Country, the Gullah Geechee Corrida, and North Carolina Low Country. And so I am a Gullah person, and we came up during the second wave of the Great Migration to Hempstead Plains at that time. And so when I think about what they have gone through and continue to go through in terms of segregation that still exists and that we still live with, the fact that there's unequal job opportunities, the fact that we have disproportionate health and where we live and our education, the people that were the only people that it was illegal to read and write, and we know that jails are being built by the third-grade reading levels of our people, of our children. And so all of these things we are still looking and living with. And so I also want to draw your attention back to the Niagara Movement and look at what they wanted us to have, and we're still fighting for that. And so when I say that I'm an African-American, I say that with pride. There is no black land for me to go visit. If you look at Italian, they come from a landmass. We come from a landmass, and that is Africa, and I'm prideful in that. And I say the American because we built this country. Our blood is in that flag. Our blood is in that, this land. And so when I say African-American, I too am an African-American, in the great poet's words. And so when we think about who we are, whose we are, where we are, and where we belong, it is here. And so since we were brought here against our will and are the only illegal, brought here as immigrants in chains against our will, there was no contract of indentured servitude. We were brought to these shores. We made it our home. We brought our customs with us, just as I have braids in my hair today. So my culture is rich and I carry with me, and I thank you for all the work that you're doing. And remember, we want the monetary, but we want to have that social, that economic, and that political capital that we have never been able to garner, and we say no to going back to segregation and oppression.
Thank you, doctor. We grateful for your testimony today. I am on the last page, so if you are looking to speak and you have not spoken, please make sure you have an opportunity to sign up.
They had mentioned that the institutions were supposed to be there. That's why I'm sitting here, I was like, what happened? And they said, it should be there. So my, there was one where they checked once, they said you can have the bill in that little box.
Okay. I have your name, just because you'd spoken earlier, but are you looking for?
Yes, I'm on...
Okay, so I'll have you after these. But with that said, if you have not spoken, I am on the last page. So there's still, the public comment is still open. What's your name? What is it again? I'm sorry. June Moses. I didn't call that name earlier. Okay, I did, I will follow up with you. I apologize. So let's go, I did go back to that page. But June Moses, you'll be next, and then it'll be, is Annette Wilcox still here? I got it. June Wilcox, you're next. June Moses, I'm sorry, Annette Wilcox. I was calling you. Thank you. So I just received an additional page.
Hello, everyone. My name is June, like the month Moses, like the Bible. I come out of Harlem. I am the Past Ten Association President for a thousand low-income people who live in Harlem. I was born and raised in New York State, so I'm quite clear on all of this. And the one thing that I always ask in all of these type of things is, how are we reaching out to the regular degulars? Every person in this room is invested and show up for things. And part of the reason why we are here now is, we need a few more to get involved, but how do we get them involved? Because they too have stories, like the sixty-four-year-old gentleman. They have opinions, but there's never any place for that to actually be, like, if I didn't go to the website for a Black and Puerto Rican weekend thing, I would never have known this was happening here. So is there any road to maybe use TikTok, other things or whatever, to bring in more people into this arena to have this discussion? Because when we get to results of things, and I'm just speaking from the housing realm because that's really what I know, when we get to a decision, the people who were never in the room are either the ones who caused the problem and we can't get there, or there isn't enough to even help take care of them there. So how do we make sure that more New Yorkers know about this? And lastly, because if I'm not mistaken, when this law passed, the reason why it passed was because the federal government was going to componey up whatever was needed. At this point, I don't think that we have that anymore, so will that be reexamined? Because the law needs to be adjusted, because if New York did it, New York needs to pay the bill. We can't rely on the federal government. Thank you for your time and thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Moses. And I just want to add, and I appreciate your patience, I just want to add that the commission recognizes that we do not have a PR strategy. And so we are in the process of hiring a firm to help us with that, so I appreciate your comment. So more to come on that, but we are working on that, so thank you. Yes.
I talk to the regular people. To me, it's not a game, and it's really detrimental for us to leave a whole quarter, two quarters of people outside of the room whenever we're doing these things.
So I encourage every person that is here and in attendance today to share the information that you've learned. Share our website. We don't want to have, we do not need to wait for a PR firm, although we'll be working with one, but you all can be that right now. And so share the information. You have the website. It's newyork.gov/reparations. Our next public hearing is in Rochester, New York. You don't have to travel to Rochester, New York. These meetings are streamed. You can click on, you can share it on the link on your Facebook page, but please, we need your help. This is the Communities Commission, and so we need your partnership to share the word. So thank you. Next, we have Annette Wilcox.
Hi, hello. My name is Annette Wilcox. I'm a member of the U.S. Freedmen Project. I'm calling on the New York State Reparations Commission to enact the following policies. Number one, recommend the disaggregation of socioeconomic data for Black African-Americans. Recognizing the importance of ethnic-based statistics, state lawmakers overwhelmingly passed bills to require disaggregation of data for the AAPI and MENA communities. If disaggregation is beneficial for those groups, it should also apply to Black African-Americans. Number two, reestablish the Freedmen's Bureau of New York State. The Bureau should not only oversee any reparations, but also advocate for the social and economic interests of freedmen, not unlike the New York State Office of New Americans. Finally, the commission should formally recognize American freedmen, the descendants of persons enslaved in the United States, as the eligible community for reparations. The state reparations bill acknowledges that freedmen were trafficked, enslaved, experienced post-slavery Jim Crow terrorism and discrimination, yet it now seeks to disqualify their descendants from reparations because their ancestors were not enslaved in New York State. Let's be clear, New York City and the United States' wealth was built by the Southern industrial slavery of the eighteen hundreds. New York's financial, New York City's financial interest was so tied to slavery that Mayor Fernando Wood proposed the city succeed with the Confederacy. Freedmen did not move to New York State voluntarily. They fled racial terror in the South. The U.S. Freedmen Project met with twenty-plus lawmakers, including the governor and the sponsors of the bill, to advocate for lineage-based reparations. Yet the legislators still made "people of descent," quote-unquote, the focus of the bill, effectively turning it into a racial equity bill. Would a Native American reparations bill include people of indigenous descent from Guatemala or Honduras? If Johannesburg, South Africa considers reparations, would I, a Black American who moved there, let's say in the nineteen eighties, qualify over a South African whose ancestors lived in Sharpville for entire generations? Absolutely not. The same principle applies here. For over sixty years, race-based policies have been illegal, yet commissions and politicians still use race to dilute resources, leaving freedmen at the bottom of the pot. Dr. King called out the unpaid debt owed to freedmen sixty years ago. It is time for real recognition, real reparations, and real action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're grateful for your testimony today. I'm on the last two sheets, and so I want to prepare Alethea Allen. Hopefully I pronounced your name correctly. And there's another person, it looks like Clinton Fainley, and if you're here. And then the next one is Carl Morit. Are any of the three of you here? And if you can introduce yourself so I know who's speaking.
I'm Carl Morris.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to thank the commission for the hard work that they're doing. I am a foundational Black American, meaning that I can trace my lineage back to slavery. In fact, my family was on a David Dickerson plantation down in Hancock County, Georgia. I come from a family of ten. I'm of the five that was born in the north in Brooklyn, Kings County Hospital in Brooklyn. And I've been doing this here reparations work independently on my own because I had no idea that you guys or other organizations exist. So I've been hand-delivering stuff, information to Governor Hochul, and I thought I was getting some responses from her. She has replied. But here's what I think reparations should look like for foundational Black Americans, and that's, again, people that can trace their lineage back to slavery. And I do believe that, you know, New York should take the lead because slavery actually started here in New York. So I'm asking for a tax-exempt check of one million dollars for each qualified individual. Now, in New York State, there's about three million Black people in New York State, however, not all are foundational Black Americans. So I think that's a reasonable offer. Of course, everything is open to negotiations. I'm also asking for a free four-year college tuition or trade school to be paid for. I'm also asking for a tax-exempt grant of a hundred thousand dollars for business startups. And yeah, we may have to offer a business plan as well in order to qualify for that, and free therapy, I mentioned two years, for the transgenerational trauma that, you know, we suffer today. So sometimes you see folks walking around in a zombie state. So sometimes you see folks walking around in a zombie state. In 1865, when we were freed from, what was it, 1863, I believe, we were emancipated, so-called emancipated. For all those years prior to that, we suffered a lot of tragedy. And to this point, up to this day, I would imagine that 95, 99% of Black folks have not received any therapy. Now, if a white person, child saw something happen that was really tragic, immediately they would have them do some therapy. And therapists today say that if trauma is not treated, it only gets worse. So we need some, we need some mental therapy, and we also need that million-dollar check tax-exempt. That's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We're grateful for your testimony. I am on the last page, and so if you have not signed up, and if your name is not Divine Prince or Pamela Stewart Martinez, these are the last two that have signed up for public testimony. And so if you're interested in signing up, please go to the room and sign up. We appreciate that. You've already did. What's your name? Okay. Next, we will have Divine Prince. And then we'll have you, Mr. Carl. We just still need you to sign up, or if someone needs to bring me that paper. Divine Prince, and then Pamela Stewart Martinez can prepare herself.
Good afternoon, commission. My name is Divine Prince. I'm the current president of the U.S. Freedmen Project. Where two years ago, right here in Albany, we made Black American history teaching the only workshop, educating the legislators and the public on how to get reparations correct and constitutionally sound. There seems to be some confusion about when we talk about who we are and where we came from. I want to be very, very clear. Those families whose ancestors were enslaved and emancipated in the United States of America are indigenous to the United States of America. By 1850, our families were multi-generational Americans. Though we have ancestry that goes back to the continent of Africa, it becomes a misnomer and a tool and term of erasure, because everybody with melanin is African American in the United States of America. And so what has happened is that this bill has become a racial justice bill, and racial justice is not reparations. And so we cannot talk about correcting harms when the bill inflicts another harm. And so after the event in Queens in December, Commissioner Lori Daniel-Favres did a public video where she talked about getting into the legislation, understanding it so you can know what the commission's responsible for and what the legislators are responsible for. So I did just that, even though we did that the entire time when we advocated for this bill to be vetoed, so it could become constitutionally sound. And so in the duties portion of that bill, it does ask and implore this commission to study a race-based model. It also talks about assessing the harms done to society at large. Do you know who's a part of society at large? Non-Black people, non-enslaved people. And so this commission is tasked with studying harms for everybody. That's a universal program. But you know what else is in that bill? If we get down to number eight of the duties, it implores this commission to investigate, it says, recommend appropriate remedies. And appropriate, in my estimation, are, when it says appropriate laws, appropriate laws are laws that can be passed. And if this commission does a race-based study and come up with race-based recommendations, those race-based recommendations will never become race-based laws, because race-based laws are unconstitutional. The legislators understood that when we told them that the first time when we made Black American history two years ago, but they still decided to come together and put this commission in place based on race base. So here's what I'm asking the commission today. If you understand now, because now it's public, that race-based recommendations that will become race-based laws are unconstitutional, are you going to side with the people and demand that this commission becomes lineage-based, or are you just gonna tell us when it's over and done with that you were just following orders?
Thank you, Mr. Divine Prince. Next, we want to make room for Pamela Stewart Martinez.
Hi, my name is Pamela Stewart Martinez, and I want to thank you for the time that you're offering all of us today. I really appreciate that. In New York State, reparations can be used to address environmental injustices caused by historical and systematic racism, redlining, and industrial pollution that has disproportionately harmed Black folks, indigenous people, and other marginalized communities as well. What I would like to see is, I would like to see direct funding for environmental health cleanups. Many of the communities, especially in Harlem, South Bronx, and Brooklyn, have suffered from high levels of air pollution, lead poisoning, and in some cases, water contamination. And that's due to facilities, like industrial facilities in our communities, highways cutting through our communities, such as the Cross Bronx Expressway. Reparations could help by expanding green spaces in those communities, which would reduce diesel emissions, water infrastructure repairs in areas of aging lead pipes, which I'm not sure if a lot of you know this, but we have high numbers of Black children with lead poisoning in this, in our communities, so that could help as well. And the Bronx has some of the highest asthma rates in the country. We could use green filtration systems. We also, in our community, could benefit from climate resilience and disaster preparedness, you know, from flooding and extreme heat, you know. In our areas like the Rockaways and Red Hook, they struggle with flooding. And heat mitigation, oh my God, it's killing our community, and it's causing so many health impact. Okay, I've got one, one minute. I'm gonna try and hurry. Also, renewable energy, usually it excludes our community. We don't get the funding for the jobs and the training for the jobs, and we don't benefit from renewable energy with low cost to our energy bills. So we need to push for that as well. And, hold on, hold on, I'm trying to find everything really quickly. Oh, and health centers for our community members who, because of these clusters and these, these issues with pollutants are causing asthma, cancer clusters, lead poisoning. We need clinics to mitigate this in our community, and they need to be fully funded and top of the line. And also, if you need a consultant on, if you need a consultant for environmental justice issues, please consider Peggy Shepherd at We Act for Environmental Justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela Stewart Martinez. I just want you to know that you can email what you have written to the commission if you feel that you didn't get everything. I just want to recognize, are you Carl? Thank you for your testimony. Are you Carl or Clinton? In the back with the blue shirt. You said you signed up?
Charles Tuohy.
Charles, okay. Charles, I couldn't read the handwriting, so I tried to call your name, so I apologize.
Okay, my name is Charles Tuohy. I'd also like to give a shout-out to Dr. Alice Green of the Center for Law and Justice. And she would be here if she were alive, it would be very good. But what I'd like to speak to you about today is Restorative Housing Justice Fund that we started here in Albany, that it's administered by Building Blocks Together and the Affordable Housing Partnership. And what it is, simply, is that if you identify as African American and you've never owned a home before, you could qualify for up to $10,000 unrestricted, because this is a very important detail. It's not just down payment assistance, it could be for medical judgment or some credit issue that's blocking you from buying a house. And so we've been doing this for a couple of years, and we've been able to help 150 of-color families to get their first home for relatively little money. I mean, $10,000 for a family is pretty good value. And you know, when we went to the bank with it, the bank first balked at it, and they said, is this secondary financing? Is, what's the hook here? And we said, no, this is unrestricted money for the family to get their first house. And they said, oh, you mean a gift letter? Well, if anybody knows about housing, most white folks have gift letters. They get them from their parents or their grandparents who own a house and have equity in their house, and can give them the cash to get their first home. Most Black families rent, so they can't help their families get their own thing. So this Restorative Housing Justice Fund is a form of reparations that says Black folks should have a gift letter, just like white folks, and it's working.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. We are grateful for, I just want to make sure, as we prepare to close our public comment section, that there are no more papers for the commission to review for public speakers.
Can I say all names?
Um, you had, I'm sorry. Can we just acknowledge? I just want to make sure that there are no other speakers.
All right.
Did you, okay, yes, I want to make room. Yes, so I apologize. Mr. Aaron Mayer.
Yes, Dr. Aaron Mayer. And I want to, again, thank you for this, and just administrative things, so they should have that cleared up at the front end, because I know how early I arrived, and I was like, but be it as it may, don't want to waste time.
Thank you for your patience.
First, I want to definitely give the tip of the hat to Brother Sanders and Sister Solaj for the work in assembling this technical work. More importantly, state what I am and who I am. Dr. Aaron Mayer, Albany, New York. I am the third-generation descendant of Zion McKenzie, whose slave price was $925, and Oma and her two children were at $630. So I am a descendant of slaves and have their slave records, et cetera. And as a, you know, biostatistician and data analyst, you know, what comes into, what are the classes, like insurance? I think we should look at the Nuremberg standards, so I mean, there are actually models that are out there for ethnic groups that have had reparations. So what are those classes? And again, like my brothers and sisters from Edo's and those who are really lifting up very profound points, because yes, actuarially, you can narrowly say if you're a descendant of New York slaves, and that narrows, as I say, as a cost-saving measure, as I say, the risk of the state of New York. But since New York State was, its core industry was fire and finance, which is the insurance, so any states that were insured by New York Life or Aetna, which had major insurance finance tied to the South, I think that that should be amongst the classification of people, so that way you will pick up the states of Georgia and South Carolina, where my ancestors came from, and, you know, the other states. So I think that those are going to be very helpful tools. I think the economic model, since slaveries were institutions linked to labor and labor value, that was stolen, those things are measurable, and I would definitely lend my expertise in how you start to model that and how you start to frame that. So we don't get into the trip or the trap of who is equitable, or who is accessible or not. You know, I think also, you know, we want to lift up any instrument of, as again, finding the old history of the various areas. So I've sued this city over 30 years, three successful voting rights lawsuits, going right to, and lifting the cause of harm, going right to the Civil War, the copperheads, Erastis Corning, who basically also want to side with the South, and Albany County Democrats. Dan O'Connell had a statement of being unreconstructed Democrats, and that was specifically meaning they go back to believing that Blacks should have been enslaved. And so it was those causes of action that we actually won in federal courts over three instances, and I will eventually try to have that submitted to you for your records as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we want to thank you all for the opportunity to learn more about the commission. I want to highlight what the individual said and shared earlier, that this information needs to be shared more broadly, and so we look to you all for helping to share the information. On the screen, you will see our official website, and also our official email. And so I ask that you, if you have testimony that you didn't have an opportunity to continue, or if you want more information, if you want to send more information, if you can please send it to the commission. We're going to hang around for a few minutes, but I want to make room, I want to just officially close the public comment and make room for my commissioners to speak. And so if there's, I see our vice chair, Dr. Jenkins, would like to speak. Thank you all for your public comment. I appreciate you being with the commission today, and I would like to give the floor to Commissioner Jenkins.
I want to thank you all for being here and sharing your testimonies, and for those who have had to leave to get to other workshops. Dr. Mayer?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your patience. And I missed your name when you asked the question earlier, but I want to always recognize the godmother of reparations, and that is Ms. Callie House. Who President Biden did not pardon posthumously when asked by Harvard law professors. And so I say that because as we think about a bill such as H.R. 40, which he also did not move on in executive order, I would love to leave with this audience a question of whether or not that is where we want the federal government to go. And I do agree with Dr. Daniels in that it is at the federal level that we will receive our greatest reparative justice because of its sheer ability to do so. But I believe that we can ask Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley and those others who were gathered after they allowed President Biden to leave office and not push his hand towards an executive order for this, and even before Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee passed away. They did not push this same bill that has been around, and we do honor the memory of and the work of, as you said, Dr. Daniels, Congressman John Conyers. We honor that work. At this time, we should be pushing, because as Dr. Daniels said, it is a placeholder which we know will not advance during this administration. So therefore, I believe, and I want you all, as the public, to consider, and please reach out to this commission in terms of your response to this question, should we not task Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley and those others who are supporting the same bill that has been around for this long period of time to do better? They must do better.
Well, I need you to.
Our, yes, absolutely. They need to do better. The time has far been spent for Black people to simply support elected officials because they look like us. We have to put their feet to the fire and require more. They have at least two years to produce a better bill. And I say, please, join me, if no other commissioners on this board will push for that, with Leader Jeffries and the others, to push for them to do better work or deny them reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins. I would like to make room for Commissioner Hamilton.
I'm gonna be brief and say, we should certainly push all of our politicians, those that represent us in general, to do better. But as it relates to Representative Presley, in fairness, we don't know what she advocated or didn't advocate with President Joe Biden as it relates to executive order. What we do know is that she is championing H.R. 40 again.
Thank you. I want to just thank everyone for being here with us today. I want to thank all of the commissioners. It is an honor to work alongside of you. I want to invite you all to Rochester, New York, or stream alongside us in Rochester on March 4th. We will share the updated commission schedule in the coming weeks, but we thank you for being part of the New York State Community Commission for Reparation Remedies public hearing today. Thank you for being here. This meeting is now closed.